Good afternoon and welcome. This is a special planning commission meeting.
Okay, good.
Good afternoon and welcome. This is the time and place for the special planning commission meeting for February 19, 2019. Roll call please.
Commissioner Astorien.
Here.
Commissioner Trachten.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
And Chair Sebastian.
Here. Do we have a motion to move the minutes from last meeting?
So.
We don't have any one minutes for the special meeting today.
Okay.
So it's none.
Okay.
We'll have it at the regular.
Thank you. With that said, let's see. Pledge allegiance, please. Follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any oral communication? Let's see. We do have one card. Violet Coker. Hello.
Good afternoon, commissioners and staff. My name is Violet Coker, Public Affairs Representative for the Carpenter's Contractors Cooperation Committee. The Quad C is a nonprofit labor compliance watchdog organization committed to quality development and quality construction jobs. I'm here today to speak about the growing underground economy and the residential construction industry. Just last week, on Monday, the Labor Commissioner announced the largest ever wage theft case brought against a private employer in the state of California. That employer is R D V Construction, who also built the Altana. So R D V Construction was cited $12 million for wage theft and labor law violations affecting 1,000 workers over 35 projects. As the Altana is one of those projects, we also wanted to share that Calcrete Construction is another subcontractor who worked on the Altana, who was the subject of a $6.3 million labor law lawsuit by the Labor Commissioner in 2017. And additionally, J P I Construction, another subcontractor on the Altana, is currently under investigation for wage theft and labor law violations. This is just one example of what we see in Glendale and across L.A. County. It is certainly an issue in the industry as a whole. We know that planning, zoning, and land use policies do not directly affect wage enforcement or labor law compliance. However, we hope to have a wholesome dialogue with all parties involved, as the projects that are approved in this meeting and in other entities within the city do not happen without the construction worker. We hope to continue this with you guys, and we hope to hopefully find a solution to change the status quo. With the housing boom and the development and the pressures to build, 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 there's going to be more residential construction, and we don't want to see bad jobs or exploited workers come out of this. We hope that it will be a boost to the economy and that the construction jobs will be good, and the workers will be happy, and the projects will be built with quality labor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Before moving on, just, this is, this is the first time I'm actually hearing an oral communication. We do not respond back. It's just an item for us to hear. Thank you. So next item, zoning appeals, we have none. And planning commission items, we don't have any. Old businesses and the new businesses, general plan amendment, downtown specific plan, PGPA 1901560, and zoning code text amendment, P Z C 1901561. Do we have a presentation? All right.
Good evening, chair and commissioners. I'm Bradley Calvert, Assistant Director of Community Development. This is also my first time, actually just for the meeting, obviously not the chair. But we are coming to you this evening. We, if you recall, about a year ago, City Council put a housing moratorium in place. And a lot of that was in response to the quality of development that we were receiving, particularly residential development-related community benefit and overall design. From that, they asked us to evaluate it, and tonight we are bringing to you the proposed amendments to the downtown specific plan. And I'm going to turn it over to Principal Planner Velia Zemetidis, and she'll give you a background as to where we, or where we've been in this process and some of the subjects we'll be looking at this evening.
Good evening. We have a rather detailed PowerPoint presentation, so I would direct your attention to the screen, please. And tonight's planning commission hearing is to recap what has been already addressed by City Council and to forward their comments to you as well. Also, as included in your staff report packets, we are presenting all of the preliminary draft chapters of the downtown specific plan, and we are requesting your comments and recommendations, which will then be forwarded to the City Council on March 5th for the introduction of the DSP amendments. As was briefly mentioned, development moratorium was set in place back in March of last year and then extended for 10 months and 15 days back in May. That moratorium expires on March 26, 2018, and we have ambitiously worked on the downtown specific plan amendment since the moratorium adoption. What you see before you now is a timeline of previous council hearings and workshops that we have conducted at both with staff, and we would like to also extend our appreciation to City Works, designed both for Lisa Padilla and Pat Smith, who are in the audience, who were helping us along the way with the preparation of these proposed amendments. We had a council workshop in October. We brought back preliminary concepts in November. We presented preliminary drafts back in January, and we also went back to City Council at their request to take a look at density limit options in the middle of February. And we are here before you today for planning commission. We just met with the design review board last Thursday, and we are scheduled to go back to City Council on March 5th with a council adoption on March the 26th.
I apologize. Is it okay if we turn the light off?
Oh, yes.
To see that. Thank you.
Having gone back and forth to City Council approximately four times now, there's been quite a bit of feedback, and much of it has been centered on the urban design standards, on streetscape standards, and on open space standards. So the comments focused on the fact that much of today's development are rather large, blocky, uniform height buildings. We needed to take a look at materials to soften them up, take a look at the scale and proportion and design components as well. There was quite a bit of feedback also in regards to the streetscape, that their Central Avenue has become somewhat cavernous, imposing as well. So to take a look at the standards provide additional relief at the street level, a more activated pedestrian experience, more street trees, more setbacks and landscaping as well. And last but not least, a big topic of discussion was the open space requirement, and whether or not the previous incentives and bonuses criteria for additional publicly accessible open space was successful. So we have reviewed, addressed, and have provided concrete amendments and revisions to the DSP, primarily on those three main topics. The DSP also has been completely reformatted. There's been a new color scheme and a format update. We've also codified guidelines. So whereas before we had guidelines and standards, we've codified the guidelines wherever possible, and we've eliminated the guideline sections to definitely be much more oriented on actual codes, regulations, and to actually have teeth in terms of being enforced and implemented. We've eliminated all references to the redevelopment agency and to the environmental planning board. We've updated also what was previously known as the Maryland Arts and Entertainment District, which is now called the Glendale Arts and Entertainment District. We've also updated all references, which was previously devoted to incentives and bonuses, and have refocused that to community benefits. What benefits is the public receiving at large? In terms of your packet, you received, as I mentioned, all of the chapters that have been either revised or repealed and replaced. We'd like to point out that there are four chapters that have been repealed in their entirety. Those would be Chapter 2 Downtown Districts, which due to the amount of reformatting and new pictures and whatnot, has been completely repealed, replaced. Obviously, Chapter 4 Urban Design has been completely revamped, as well as the Chapter 5, which is the open space, and Chapter 7, again, which is community benefits, previously the incentives and bonuses. The other chapters had minor amendments and tweaks to make sure that the language is consistent, the reformatting, and also the mobility. There was quite a bit of discussion with regards to shared mobility, correct, and the streetcar analysis. So. At this point, I would like to turn it back over to Bradley Calvert to continue.
So what you received in your packets and what we'll go through tonight for Chapters 4, 5, and 7 particularly represent a pretty large-scale change. This is primarily because we were taking that next step towards trying to create a more fully developed form-based code. And that's with the intent of, we really want to influence what the urban design looks like, what the buildings look like, the kind of character that we're creating from the buildings to the streetscapes, to the experience that those feel as they move through a city. It may also be interpreted as cumbersome by some. There's a lot of information in there, but we want to make it clear that we're not intentionally making this a larger document or trying to regulate more things because we want to make a long and difficult process. We just really want to, one, create better results ultimately. But it's also predictable. It's predictable for our applicants, our designers, those that are trying to come to our city and do business to develop projects, and for our city staff and our city council to also have some predictability in terms of the review of these projects. So we're really focused on creating measurable standards, things that are quantifiable, that have certain dimensions, percentages related to them. So it's very clear what it is that we want. What we heard from many applicants and designers is that it's not always clear what it is that we would like to see, and that adds time, cost, and energy to a project. The clearer we are, the better results we get, the more predictable it is for them in terms of what they bring to us for a project. So Chapter 4, the column that you see on the left side, this was the old, or the, excuse me, the existing urban design chapter, and we have expanded it to what you see on the right. And this is structured in a way to help designers, as we heard from feedback from the DRB as well last week, to really walk through this process in a linear fashion. It focuses on 4.1 site planning. What are those big pieces that really inform how a site's planned, how that massing is created, and then slowly drilling into some of the details in terms of the roofline modulation, the massing, the materials, and you get smaller and smaller in scale as you move through the document and the process. As part of that, we looked at the existing FAR and height chart. And we are not increasing any of the densities, any of the FAR in the downtown. Those we'll all maintain. What we are looking at doing is replace, or removing the height and stories requirement. And towards the end of this presentation, we'll kind of walk through exactly why it is that we're doing that. Primarily, it's because we are asking for more at the ground level. We're asking for wider sidewalks, greater setbacks, more open space, and we need to displace that area in some location. We're not looking at increasing the heights in most of these, though we did find two locations where the height, an increase in height is justifiable. Essentially, 185 feet is kind of this no man's land for construction. It doesn't, the economic return isn't there. They're not going to build at that height. It's also why we removed the stories requirement. You'll notice that in some of these where it's 12 stories and 185 feet in height, that's not very typical for residential development. You're not going to build 14 to 16-foot floor-to-ceiling heights. So that's another reason why we moved that out. But in terms of increasing the height there, it's an opportunity for us to promote taller, slenderer buildings, opening up the ground level. So if we raise that height, and you'll see in the chart later on where we've increased that to, is to an area that's actually buildable. It's actually constructable, and then hopefully applicants, developers would pursue that, in turn giving us more opportunity for community benefit. So you'll see in the Broadway Center A and the Orange Central area, we will be proposing a height increase up to 245 feet.
Chair, do we have to ask questions now? I think we should.
Would you, would it be more
Would you, would it be more faster? I didn't get any public comments, so I think, just go ahead.
Yeah, I noticed that there are two areas that the height jumped almost 100%. The Broadway A and then Orange Central. Is there any particular reason? Because I looked at other ones, they're about, when it's from 30 to 40% at the max, and these two particular areas, just height, it just went up. It doubled the, it doubled the height. So is there any particular reason why those two areas were chosen?
Mainly because that 185-foot height area, as I mentioned, that's an area that, it's a height that applicants or developers would not build to. The economic return just isn't there. So either they're going to stop that construction at about 80, 85 feet because it's essentially wood over concrete, or they're going to transition to the type 1 construction, and the building needs to be made tall enough to justify that return. We would still maintain the existing density. We would not be increasing density, we'd just be allowing them to go taller and slender. And as we walk through, again, the open space, that's one of the other primary reasons is if we can make the buildings more slender, less of these large bulky boxes, we make them taller, we open up more space at the ground level, more opportunity for public open space.
Same, you know, I'm looking at Galleria, that's 80 feet high, that's close to, you know, 95 feet there. And that one with incentive just went up to 95 feet. Really, you know, it's really, you know, you're contradicting yourself there.
We didn't change those heights. So the way this is set up is there's a by-right floor area ratio and building height that an applicant can build to. And then there was the incentive program, which they could then go to that increased level, which is that second column, the maximum height in FAR with incentives. So that's the location where we changed two of those building heights, the two circled red here, that would go up to 245. All the other ones are maintaining what's already in the existing Downtown Specific Plan.
And so, if you may, from what we have, the built-out that we've already had in downtown, what's approximately the average height of the buildings that have gone up?
Current ones range somewhere between 55 and 70 feet, for the most part, but they also have about 100% lot coverage. They're, or close to, not quite. You can see there's some modest spaces for landscaping or open space, but they occupy pretty much the entire site.
Isn't that the preference of a developer to do a type 6, is it called? The podium with wood frames to go up, and after a certain height, you have to go to a different building?
Correct, and that's why we wanted to lift that building height, so it was, essentially, it was, there was enough of incentive and a reason to go to that building height. The density's already there. A five FAR easily fits into a building of 250 to 300 feet tall. And for us, to encourage more open space, and this was one of the things that we discussed with council, was to slender the buildings up, make them go up rather than out, so that we can get more of that ground.
So in actuality, you're really reducing FAR and converting that into open space?
No, actually, they'd maintain the same FAR. And once we've walked through all of this, we have a diagram at the end that will illustrate exactly how that's been essentially displaced.
Okay.
Thank you.
Actually, may I ask a question? Just to, because I had a question on that, just to again clarify, even though the height is taller now, the FAR has not changed?
Does not change. We've maintained all the FARs. So there's no increase in density. I know that there have been questions and comments about that. We have not increased density at all. It's really, as I've referenced in other meetings, we're moving the food around on the plate, essentially. We're putting it in a different composition that's more amenable to open space, to better design.
And you might have already answered, but again, what would that be, what would be the benefit of that? Having a taller building, same FAR to the applicant or?
More open space.
Just, is it just more open space? Is that what it is? Because my understanding is that the current standard is kind of pushing the developers to not go that high? So what would this new standard be? Because it's a taller building, it's the same FAR, so they're actually not getting more? Or am I not understanding?
Correct, they are not getting more. The primary objective of this, the amendment to the DSP is to improve what the city is receiving in terms of design quality, community benefit, open space, the public realm.
Okay.
So Mr. Calvert, before I let you go forward, and I'll promise you it's the last one till we get to really fun stuff and questions. Most of these, the elements and the recommendations for the council and the desires that the council has had, has to do with design. And what's in front of us, really, I mean, I want a clarification exactly. We're not giving you recommendations about height, FAR and stuff, those you got from your Design Review Board. What is it that you want us to feedback or give feedback on? Because this body is used to give feedback on land use issues, zoning, and those type of stuff. And the only thing that I can see here, out of the five, council, if you go back to your, the page that you had for the council feedback, out of all of these, they're mostly design, and the only thing that I see that we are charged with is the stuff about open space and streetscapes, right?
Commissioner Astorian, planning commissioners, what you have before you is a project, essentially, that is a Downtown Specific Plan amendment, that is considered a general plan amendment. And so as such, it is going through the general plan amendment process, which requires recommendation by the Planning Commission. You are welcome to go ahead and make any comments as you wish, whether it be a numeric comment on the amount of publicly accessible open space, on the heights, on any other type of standards that are being proposed and put forward to you today. So you do have the ability to make comments. Your recommendation, then, will be carried over to the City Council as part of the general plan amendment process. Also wrapped up right now is a zoning code text amendment, which I was going to get to at the end of the presentation, but I will mention that right now, the fact that we are also amending the parking standards for hotels and reducing that. Again, as a zoning code text amendment, you are charged with making a recommendation to the City Council for the zoning code text amendment. So twofold. We have a general plan amendment based on the amendments to the DSP, and then a zoning code text amendment. And both of those items before you, you may comment on, and your recommendations and comments will be forwarded to the City Council for their consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Astorian and Chair, if I could add some context, and I don't know if the staff had said before, I stepped in late, but we're transitioning from guidelines to standards, which will then be codified for you. That is in your purview.
So we don't want to go through every single element that we changed. As we've acknowledged here, there are several things, but there are a number of essentially big rocks, things that would really influence the overall character of building streets and open space. So one of those was the response we heard from council and the committee, that the buildings are essentially too boxy. Everything's in uniform height. There's not a lot of visual interest or diversity in terms of the skyline or the rooflines of buildings. So what we propose as part of Section 4.2.2 is some standards and options for applicants to pursue that would create additional visual interest. The first there is roofline modulation, where we would require a change of at least 10 feet for every 150 linear feet, again, to encourage a building that would have a more diverse roofline, something with some visual interest, so that all the buildings essentially didn't run at the exact same height and elevation. Another was an upper-level stepback, and this was in response to that the developments around Central essentially created a canyon-like effect. The walls that go straight up 55, 65 feet, and that they could choose the option to step the building back at a specified height by 15 feet. So it would create a more appropriate scale for the pedestrian environment, would make the buildings less imposing. A couple of the other options were a corner feature. We heard positive comments from the council in that they appreciated the gateway-like effect, the landmark-like effect that a corner feature of a building could create. So similar to roofline modulation, a change of at least 10 feet in height, again emphasizing that kind of corner element. And then what we're also referring to is height averaging, and this is something that may be appropriate in some of our transition zones. And that is where, essentially, they could displace some of their height on another portion of the site and exceed the existing building height, provided that the entire building, on average, met the maximum building height. What this does is, one, break up the massing and essentially two distinct features, so it creates the feeling, the appearance, the aesthetic quality of two distinct buildings, but also offers a better transition to those lower-density neighborhoods that surround it. So it's providing a little bit of flexibility. So in this case, we created four options. Again, we weren't trying to dictate exactly what we wanted, identical results, if you will. We wanted to provide options, we want to promote creativity and diversity, but there are certain things that we want to see improved. Another is the overall massing. Some of our blocks are up to 300 feet long for developments, and we might see the exact same storefront or material run for that full span. Lacking in kind of visual interest becomes monotonous as a pedestrian. It's not as welcoming as a pedestrian environment, so creating a requirement where setbacks need to occur, or some sort of modulation in the facade where depth is created, the building can project outward or recess in. So again, it feels like these distinct features, that the building is broken into these smaller elements rather than 300 feet of storefront glazing and mixed with ephesus. There's a couple of references there, for examples. And then building separation. Again, some of these blocks are extremely long, and there are opportunities to make that building feel as kind of two distinct features. We have a couple of developments that have done this, where they've created an opening and above, that's the amenity space for the development, but at the street level, it still feels like that 300-foot-long kind of monotonous wall. So if a development exceeds a certain length and facade, requiring a building separation where that would actually come down to grade. That's something that they're putting into place in most developments anyways, but asking them, or telling them to bring that all the way down to the street level. So at that point, that building feels like it's two separate masses, there's some visual interest as pedestrians move along the streetscape. There's a break from that kind of urban wall, essentially. And as you'll see in some later examples, it can also be paired with the new open space requirements as well. An example there, this one providing stairs that ascend up to the common area for that building. Materials was another comment that we heard. A lot of it was lacking in visual interest. It was monotone in color. The quality of the materials was not where many would like to see. That's primarily in response to the use of ephesus. This is essentially what you're seeing in a lot of these kind of boxier buildings, that white material, that beige color. It's not a high-quality material. It's lacking in human scale. So as part of this, these new standards requiring certain, or not certain materials, but not using this material at the street level. We're asking for materials to be of human scale, and that may be masonry, it may be wood, it may be CMU. We're not telling them exactly what to put at street level, we're telling them what not to put there. We are, we put it up to the applicant essentially to demonstrate to us that the material that they want to use has a human scale. Concrete could, for example, if it's properly scored, if the form mold is done appropriately. So it's really trying to discourage these large 8-foot-by-4-foot panels that we're seeing along the street facade, and also putting in a requirement for diversifying that palette as well. The more materials we get in there, the more visual interest that's created, the more complex the building is, the more you can break down that scale. And the facade in general, especially at the street level, trying to create more diverse and engaging streetscapes. And that really does start at the building. How does that building engage with the public realm? There are certain features and brand that everyone loves, the openings of many of the storefronts that swing open, swing out. Essentially, the private uses are spilling into the public realm, and trying to encourage more of that on other streets as well. Trying to encourage that same activity, that same mixing of the public and private realm, so that there's that same vibrancy and energy that we see on other streets. So there are certain standards that are in place now, again, referencing materials, trying to move away from just the standard storefront aluminum windows that are used in every kind of facade. Also, standards around residential stoops. We have some that have kind of created blank facades and blank walls because they've essentially turned their stairs and the supporting wall creates a 6-to-8-foot tall blank facade. And that creates safety issues, for one. There's lacking of visibility, but it's also lacking in that kind of visual interest. Those stoops are not engaging with the street, you're missing that kind of human scale at that point. And this is a list of some of the other elements that we've looked at as well that you could find in your packet there. Canopies, trying to encourage more of those, again, reinforcing that human scale. Balconies was another topic of interest. Some of the newer developments kind of have a tacked-on feel, it feels like the buildings are just stuck onto the facade, so we have put a standard in there about partially recessed or fully recessed balconies, not allowing those to overhang into the public right-of-way, again, kind of creating an imposing nature on the streetscape. And then just some of the other smaller elements that make up the overall design of a building. Going to turn it back over to Avilia, who's going to discuss the public realm, which includes the sidewalks and public open space.
As part of the updated and revamped Chapter 4 Urban Design component, we actually took a look at having the urban realm defined by the streetscape and also including additional street topologies. So, in terms of the street beautification, seeing that it is made up of landscaping, street trees, street furniture and amenities, lighting fixtures and signage, as well as the intersections, whether they be decorative sidewalks or bulbs out for traffic calming, and that would include public art and active uses. How are the uses that are lining these public realms and these public right-of-ways, are they activating them, or as was just mentioned moments ago, somewhat deadening and not putting the eyes on the street? The DSP previously had only three street topologies. One would be the primary street, which is the southerly portion of Brand, the second being the entertainment street, which was along the Maryland Arts and Entertainment District, the Maryland Avenue now being renamed to Artsok Avenue, and the third being the residential street. These would be the streets located in the East Broadway District that were part of the previous original mixed-use zoning designation in the city, the commercial mixed-use and the residential mixed-use zone designations that have now been revamped. So those were the three, the only three street topologies in the city, in the DSP, and those included standards just in regards to setbacks. No other type of criteria were specified. In the new street realm section, we've identified two additional street topologies. One is the commercial mixed-use street, which would now identify those areas that are along Central Avenue and up above on North Brand in the Gateway District. And we also have a new street topology, the residential mixed-use, which would be essentially the streets that are between Brand Boulevard and Central Avenue, basically running east to west. So the ones that would be tied in between the two major commercial thoroughfares, the north-southeast, north-south streets being Brand and Central, and the more residential-flavored streets in between along Orange and the cross streets. So, along with those street topologies, we have distinct setbacks that include specified parkway widths, that include expanded sidewalk widths as well. So the overall streetscape has definitely and certainly been expanded, whereas before, most of the streets had only a 12-foot setback from the curb to the building wall, which would be an average of 12 feet. Now, as you'll note, in the commercial mixed-use, there is a total setback width of 18 feet, so an additional six feet for an expanded sidewalk, an expanded parkway, and what is now known as the building adjacent zone as well, which would allow for active uses, whether it's outdoor dining or as well as landscaping. So the overall setback for the majority of these new street topologies has definitely been expanded in order to create that more pedestrian-inviting experience. And as part of the public realm section, we also included criteria and standards for frontages. What type of uses can line each of these street topologies? The urban amenities, whether it's trash cans or benches or seating, public art and whatnot. We would also define the floor-to-ceiling overall height, so no building projections would be permitted above the expanded sidewalk level. And again, as noted, projections and overhangs being identified in this current public realm section, whereas before, that was not even mentioned in the DSP. Which segues us to the urban, to the open space, which would be Chapter 5. You'll note on the slide now, what we had previously in the DSP identified the open space requirements, the network, and then identified briefly the open space requirement and some design guidelines, especially in regards to sort of outdoor rooms, whether it be plazas, courtyards, and passeos and the like. We have expanded the Chapter 5 Open Space Network to focus less on the parks aspect of the previous chapter and more on the open space, whether it would be for the publicly-accessible open space and defining the open space and defining the criteria and standards set forth, and then also discussing the various aspects of that publicly-accessible open space with specific criteria for courtyards and plazas and passeos. One of the original workshops that we held with the city council included these next two slides to give a brief overview and example of what we previously found in the DSP, which according to the DSP existing standards, allowed for open space to include the areas along the public right-of-ways. So what you see before you in previous projects allowed the open space to be contiguous to the street and be within what we'd essentially call that street front setback. There was a requirement that there be a 20-by-20 open space courtyard or plaza, whatnot, but that was very minimal when you took a look at the overall site in totality. Unfortunately, the guidelines, or in this case, the standards, didn't identify the fact that we needed to exclude the walkways leading to the main lobbies and entrances. It included, or in this case, didn't require us to exclude the driveway, nor the walkways leading to the ground floor pedestrian, or ground floor units. So essentially, what you had in terms of code really left you with very minimal publicly-accessible open space. So as part of the revamped open space standards and criteria, and this is what, again, what was previously permitted by code, which would be the street front setbacks, now can be consolidated, relocated, where the open space is definitely much more meaningful and it's much more larger, it addresses the corner lot, it actually brings the units closer to the street, and then it excludes any type of pedestrian or public right-of-ways to the main entry. And the garage then, in this example, is relocated to the rear. So no longer do you have open space where previously you had a driver running through the open space calculations. Now the driveway is relocated to have access off of the rear alley. And then in this case, it really activates and consolidates and provides for that meaningful open space that is the vision or as described by the city council as the desirable community benefit. Yes, Mr. Commissioner Astorian?
And if it's not a corner lot? If it's in line, then how would you concentrate the open space the way that you've done it on the corner? How would you address that?
If it is a large-scale project, again, if you have, for instance, a streetscape with a project site that has 150 linear feet along Central, the open space could be consolidated, perhaps with the central portion as part of the building separation. So you would be able to go ahead and as part of this building separation requirement, provide your publicly-accessible open space.
Got it.
As noted, again, there was the challenge to make sure that open space is a community-public benefit that's activated and attractive. And so the publicly-accessible open space, as you'll note, Commissioner Astorian, the example, the one on the right, shows how a building can essentially have that building separation and provide that publicly-accessible open space within the center of its street frontage. The example, obviously, on the left is the one with the corner lot, with the public space at the intersection. As part of the open space chapter revisions, we've essentially doubled the amount of publicly-accessible open space, whereas most of the projects either provided somewhere in between five to 10, well, approximately 5%, most of the publicly-accessible open space has now been raised for most projects to 5% to 10% of the total site area. And this doubling hopefully leads to the ability to provide more meaningful open space as opposed to those token areas. So as you'll note here in the table, all of these have doubled from the previous DSP chart. On top of the doubling of the open space, there are now new standards and criteria that are included in the chapter to address things like minimum area. For instance, our courtyards now must have a minimum area of 1,200 square feet and minimum dimensions of 30 by 40. There is also, there are included new standards in terms of the amount of concrete paving that's not to exceed 25% to make sure that the rest of the paving is attractive and decorative. There are tree requirements, in this case for courtyards and plazas. There's one tree required for 600 feet, one seat for 200 square feet, that the courtyards be lined with activated storefronts. There's a requirement that a public open space of so many square feet have to, would have to have a focal point, whether it be a public art piece on-site or a water feature. And lastly, that all designs should comply with the crime prevention through environmental design standards and just to ensure that they be safe and adequately lit. So again, this slide before you just shows one of the diagrams that now has been included. You'll note that in the current chapters, both for chapters, the urban design chapters for, Chapter Five Open Space, and throughout, we've included diagrams and design-focused type of renderings that essentially show what is required so that developers know exactly what needs to be done for their projects in terms of the development criteria. And again, yes?
Just a quick question. You said most, most examples doubled. What hasn't doubled from an open space standpoint?
I believe the Alex Theater Area B, these would be the smaller areas right adjacent to the Alex Theaters, just because of the width of the lots and the small, the small minimum area standards. Everything else has doubled.
Okay.
And it's also not conducive to an environment such as that. There's a certain kind of urban wall, urban pattern that you see in the smaller buildings now, moves from one facade to another facade. And essentially interrupting that would not serve that energy well, not serve that design well of that street.
And that's mostly on Brand Boulevard?
Correct, on Brand Boulevard.
I want to echo the comments that was made by Design Review Board on that 30 by 40, 1,200 square foot, you know, rather than leaving that as a rectangle box there, that I think they made a comment as to having that as a guideline, but you can be creative with the shape that totals amounts to 1,200 square foot and that in that 30 by 40, you know, the boundary area. I thought that was a good comment.
And we're currently working out language for that right now. Some sort of two dimensions on width and depth essentially, but allowing that flexibility so that we can encourage more creativity.
Yes.
Yes, it definitely is not a hard, set-fast rule that it be a rectangular 30 by 40, but that it has the ability to be creatively designed by the landscape architects. Which brings us to Chapter Seven. Previously, this was the Art Incentives and Bonuses Chapter, which focused on the incentives that developers can obtain. In this case, we have revamped it so that the focus has now shifted on the community benefits. And that is the main focus, that what are the community benefits that can be provided by these developers? And then in exchange, they can obtain additional development potential. So we veered away from if this, if you're providing this incentives and bonuses, you get the maximum floor area or the maximum height. In exchange, then for this particular revamping, we're focusing on additional publicly-accessible open space. And we're going to go into it in a few slides as well, but diversity in housing, other uses and project styles that the city would like to see as part of the council vision. So noted here, the incentives and bonuses chapter that specified specific uses and the new, and I should be corrected, proposed community benefits chapter that dealt with preferred uses that are being maintained, that would be allowed. And I noted here on the slide, certain preferred uses that would be maintained to go up to the maximum development potential. Those preferred uses are affordable housing projects, the SB 1818, historic preservation, buildings that are now on the register and that would be able to have developments build around that, but you would then be allowed to go ahead and build to the maximum development potential by maintaining that historic designated building on-site. Same with hotel uses. It's a top priority in terms of the city to have hotel development in the downtown and then reuse of existing buildings. It's very similar to the historic preservation. The new system that is being introduced, and I'll turn it over to Bradley, is a tiered benefit system that would apply to both residential and non-residential commercial projects.
I have a question. I noticed that most of this community benefits, you know, is engaged in SB 1818 and then also other incentives with open space and so on. Have we ever looked at transit-oriented incentives where if you're nearby mass transit and things like that, that also benefit the developer?
There's one part you can touch on. We do have, as you move up this tiered system, there are elements that they could participate in essentially to improve overall mobility. By its nature in a downtown, it's walkable and on frequent rapid transit. So in many ways, it's already transit-oriented development because it's already on these kind of main service lines.
Yes.
Hi. Hello. There's a planning commission. There may also be benefits to the developer in taking advantage of SB 743, having to do with TOD. If you're within a certain distance of transit, you can get some streamlined California Environmental Quality Act review. We are also able to use what are called sustainable communities, environmental assessments. So those are things that developers would also be able to utilize, could make it their review shorter and more streamlined and subject to a substantial evidence standard of review instead of the lower threshold that would be associated with a mitigated negative declaration. Hopefully you can hear me.
Is that reflected in our report?
That is law, the way that it is right now. So it's state law.
It's state law.
It's state law.
And I think what Bradley was referring to is the fact that any development that takes place is going to be transit-oriented development. So we don't need a specific incentive for it because it's going to be, the state has other incentives and programs for them to build.
Because I did notice that our neighboring city, like City of Los Angeles, has a tier system, which is, you know, tier one, two, three, four, for transit-oriented, you know, incentives. So, you know, I thought, you know, there are a lot of developers that would take advantage of that on top of this SB 1818. So that's why I was kind of, you know, asking about, that goes beyond what state has mandated, you know, for City of LA to take into consideration of a, you know, TOC communities.
And for many of those systems, such as the one in LA, that's also focused around rail stops, which currently we don't have. So that's one of the reasons why they have that system as well.
So if I may, Jim.
Yes, please.
By that logic, by the way, SB 1818 is also state law. So for one reason or other, we have, we're emphasizing this more because of the affordable housing issue that this city is facing, I think. But let me ask you, and this may be a question for Mr. Lance of AM as well. We have hotels as a preferred use, and therefore there will be some community benefits that it's going to generate, therefore we're going to incentivize it by reducing the parking to what it should have been years ago. But my question from you is very simple. When we talk about businesses, this is a category of business that you want to attract to downtown specific plan boundaries. And the most important part of attracting businesses to a downtown is to do what is known as a gap analysis. Basically, you look at the trade area, you look at the demographics, the tapestry and the economics, and see if there is a need for that. Exactly what developers do when they want to build something. But as a city, if we were to, and this could very well be for other areas that are important to City of Glendale, but if we were to do that gap analysis and find out and say, okay, this is the area that we are interested in developing, but we want to have the kind of businesses that we think is going to have leakage, and I don't want to get too much too technical about this thing, that would attract more money in as opposed to having the residents of that area going out and spending the money. Have we done something like that for the hotels? If yes, then we should do it for a bunch of other businesses that I think are missing in downtown.
Yes, we have done it for hotels and found that there is supportable capacity in certain categories of hotel use. And with respect to doing it with others, welcome to hear those ideas I find. We did our tech strategy was generally a very similar look at snapshot at that business cluster and then the strategy, how might we attract that business?
So in other words, you looked in general in Glendale or downtown specific plan, you said, the economics, the demographics, the tapestry, these all are indicating that we need that tech center. Is that what you're telling me?
Well...
Because that's what gap analysis is, right?
I would go back to your original question of hotels. We did that study that said we could support 400 to 500 hotel rooms in Glendale. And we did it citywide, in the categories of up, I always forget what it's, upper, upper business and at the discount level. Now, at the discount, that's extended stay or economy. It's extended stay, the council has indicated a preference not to have those. And our code indeed prohibits kitchenettes, which are a feature of extended stay. So with, there's prob, and now because we did not do the Indigo, there's probably 100 to 200 business class and then maybe 400 of other, that is an upper scale.
To mean the luxury brands.
The luxury.
Thank you.
So returning to the community benefit system, as mentioned previously, our current incentive system essentially allowed a developer to come in and choose a certain incentive to participate in, and they would therefore get a certain amount of density that they could achieve as part of their development. And that goes back to that earlier chart that we showed, a buy-write FAR versus the maximum. And some of the challenge with that is that we may be able to establish what some of those incentives are, those priorities, but we're not choosing them for each development. We're not having the opportunity to obtain the most community benefit. So much like what we were attempting to do with all of these changes, to be very intentional, be very deliberate. We heard from council, we've heard from the community, that open space is a very important feature. It's something that's missing in downtown. Also making sure that downtown is accessible for residents of all age groups, all household structures. So we're really focused on enhancing the open space and creating a diverse mix of housing in downtown. So what we set up is this three-tiered system. The first is essentially the buy-write FAR. That's what's currently in that chart. They don't have extra elements to pursue or required to do aside from what's in our standards, and that includes our open space standards. Tier two is where this starts to kick in. With this, they are required to provide an additional 1% of publicly-accessible open space by reaching this development potential and ensuring that 20% of their housing units achieve what we're calling this diversity in housing mix. And that includes two and three-bedroom units, which also have to follow a series of design standards that we have incorporated. These design standards were researched from several other cities, again, with the intent of trying to make downtown accessible to households with children, multi-generational households. They need a certain, they need certain design features as part of their homes, whether that's reducing the number of en suite bathrooms or the location in the building or ensuring that the building provides a play space for children, these kind of standards that they would have to follow. Moving up to tier three, and that would go back to the original chart we had shown you, that maximum development potential, they would have to then produce an extra 2% of publicly-accessible open space. That's on top of the existing or the proposed standards where we have already doubled that open space. So I know that you've received some communication, there's been this discussion that we've only increased the publicly-accessible open space by 1%. But depending on the site size, we've actually increased it from 5% to, as we've recently learned through a project that wanted to be evaluated through this, could be all the way up to 21 and a half percent if they participate in this program. So... So it is a substantial increase. It's also increasing the number of those housing units that qualify as part of that housing diversity mix up to 30%. And then we did have one category in there where they could choose, and that was the concept of mobility improvements that could be providing a bicycle share system for their residents or a car share system. Investing in improvements to pedestrian or cyclist infrastructure within the city. 2% of public art onsite could be an option. That was something we also heard from council, and it also helps us implement the art implementation program and to encourage art be integrated into projects rather than just kind of added on. And then also priority uses. And that really stems again from that diversity and household or housing mix. Again, if we're trying to attract more families, households that are multi-generational, they may need uses such as daycare facilities, things that are needed in a close urban walkable environment to make the most of that opportunity. And all of these, you know, right now, we have set these essentially two main priorities as part of this community benefit program. But one thing we've encouraged the council is that we return to the DSP every few years and recalibrate as needed. Throughout this process, we're always measuring what's coming in the door essentially as part of development. We're measuring the success of it. And we may find out that we have oversaturated ourselves in open space, and we need to recalibrate that three to five years from now.
I don't think we're anywhere close to that, Mr. Gal.
Probably not. We're a long ways away. You're correct. But it's the idea that we're always measuring ourselves and then recalibrating as necessary because the urban environment is very dynamic, it's always changing, and the needs of it are as well. That is partially what this diversity in housing mix is doing. We have seen an influx of certain type of units, and we're trying to bring more diversity into that mix to make sure that downtown is accessible for residents and households of all ages and compositions. Some of those requirements, larger unit sizes, so we have looked at currently, a two-bedroom unit has to be 800 square feet to participate in this program. It needs to go up to 900. Three bedrooms currently are at 1,000. It would need to go up to 1,100 to participate in this program. The locations of the units need to be in the lower levels of the building. That's in response to families with children don't want to wait forever in elevators. Senior citizens may not want to wait forever for elevators or climb stairs, making those units accessible to them. And just a number of other design guidelines and standards that we've included that make those units more attractive to a broader cross-section of the population essentially. And there are a number of things not including the DSP that we also need to look at in terms of policies from the city in response to this program and if this program is successful. So the last thing we wanted to do as part of this whole process and update is to see if what we were proposing could actually work. As a recovering architect, I can't help but play around with this kind of stuff and see if I can find ways and holes and gaps to be able to essentially circumnavigate the things that we have created in this code. So what we first modeled out here was what could be built under the current DSP. And some of the things that you'll notice at flat roof line, this is something that we heard from council in the community, that boxy form, that building separation is not facing the street, it could be facing any location, so it's not breaking up the massing. The sidewalks being too narrow, the balcony is projecting outward, whether that's over the sidewalk or if it's just creating that kind of stuck-on, tact-on feel of the facade. The overall facade, the length of that, 200, 300 feet, if going to continuous, all in the same kind of plain facade that's lacking in that visual interest. As mentioned earlier, garage entries that are on the street that create conflicts with pedestrians and cyclists. How we've seen planters in these small pockets of concrete counted towards open space. So we took all the standards that we have proposed as part of this and tested it, and this is what we were able to come up with. You see the roof line modulation, that change in height creating some of that visual interest. The building separation where the building breaks apart and also locating that publicly accessible open space within that. That goes back to your question earlier, Commissioner Astorian, about what would you do in the middle of the block if you couldn't be on the corner? Recessing the balconies, creating wider sidewalks, more facade modulations, which also correspond with that desire to recess those balconies, again, creating that visual interest in the facade. Encouraging or requiring most of the planning to be at grade. What we actually found in a lot of projects is that they were proposing at-grade landscaping, but they weren't accounting for their parking garage underneath. And they would come back and they would have to create these raised three-foot tall planters. So we weren't even getting open space that really could count towards something you could walk across necessarily. As part of some process improvements that we'll be bringing in March, we will be looking at when applicants come in the door that they have to account for that earlier on so that we don't have those changes afterwards. In this case, we had up to 16% publicly accessible open space. Again, originally five, now up to 16. This fitting in between that building separation, creating that courtyard. Canopies, outdoor seating, public art, all of these things integrated into the development. But most importantly is that this envelope that we've created, this is the exact same height as the last image that I had shown you. And that's because we removed that story's requirement from being in place. What we were seeing in most recent developments is that that top story was actually two, but it was only counting as one because it would essentially be a loft or what we were referring to as a mezzanine level. But essentially, that could have held an entire additional floor of units. Now, we were asking for all of this space at grade, and we need to displace that somewhere else, and that's where we get that by taking that story's requirement out. And this one actually lowered the height of part of this building. So again, trying to create that height, that diversity in height. Same FAR, same building height, just taking that story's requirement out was able to change a lot of things for us. If we're looking at it in plan view, the image on the left, looking at what we could do with the DSP currently, that area highlighted in red represents what's at grade that a pedestrian could use, primarily sidewalk, small pocket of public open space. In this version, we've created substantially more. And again, that all goes back to being able to displace that entire floor of units within that massing.
Okay, which brings us to the last few details of the presentation, which would be the changes following the packet distribution. There were some minor tweaks that we noticed that needed to be made, and so we are bringing those to you just for clarity and transparency. Two items in the urban design section. One is the building adjacent zone, and there is a proposal now to have the building adjacent zone as opposed to be an average dimension as opposed to a finite. This would allow for a little bit more flexibility along a streetscape so that you would still have the overall setback as noted in the street topology section and in the setbacks section, but that you, by adjusting and having an average of the building adjacent zone, you'd be able to go ahead and have the building a little bit closer to the street at one location, having a little bit further back to add a little bit of variety and whether it be activated areas or additional landscaping at certain locations.
And that corresponds with the facade modulation as well, trying to make sure that all of these different standards are in line with one another and they speak to one another and produce results that are what we hope to see.
I have one more question. Your, you know, community benefits obviously gives developer incentives to, for the height incentives and the FAR incentives. Does the parking requirement stay the same or is there also, you know, any changes with that?
The only changes in regards to parking would be the proposed hotel reduction in the parking ratio from 1.0 per hotel room to 0.8. Correct.
So no changes?
No other changes are proposed at this time. Second item under urban design would be the tall buildings. Previously, staff had proposed a maximum floor plate size, and we have eliminated that section. A few items under the open space, oh, yes.
Sorry, just quickly on that, so are there none then, like no differences in the type of buildings as far as that goes? It's just eliminated altogether? Because I remember it was 12,000 for residential and 24,000 previously for the floor plate?
It's removing that, correct.
So both are gone?
Yes.
Both are gone, and neither one was in the previous DSP. So this was just a proposal in the current DSP amendment and as such been eliminated. So...
What we found when speaking with architects, developers, is that in a lot of ways, that was also hindering some of the creativity that they were trying to establish and that we don't necessarily box them all into the exact same uniform shape, uniform height.
Okay, which brings us to the few minor adjustments following the staff report distribution regarding open space. One would be for publicly accessible open space requirements for larger projects. Those would be the projects that have a floor area ratio greater than 3.0 FAR. Half of the 20% minimum requirement would be publicly accessible open space, and staff is recommending that the additional 1% open space for every 0.5 FAR above that be purely publicly accessible open space. Whereas this is somewhat of a technical issue, but based on the table as part of your staff report and as part of the open space chapter, essentially that table lists the total amount of public, of open space. Half of that has to be publicly accessible. So in this case, there's just a minor adjustment that instead of it being half of it publicly accessible, you'd have to have the minimum 10% required and then 1% for each additional point, 0.5 FAR above 3.0. So it's a minor adjustment, but it would then create more additional publicly accessible open space, and then it would push those larger projects to go higher and then have more publicly accessible open space on the ground floor as opposed to providing it throughout the building.
Okay, so what happens to the other half? But the half that you're using is for the calculation purposes, is that what it is? What happens to the other?
The overall size does not change. It's just you would be a slightly greater amount of publicly accessible open space as opposed to the overall, it'd be a larger percentage of that.
Essentially, we capped it at 10% of private open space.
The 1% incentive would be over the, of half, which is the 10% of the entire POA.
And it all goes towards the publicly accessible open space once they've crossed that three FAR threshold.
Correct.
Why is that?
There are a couple of reasons, primarily to get us more publicly accessible open space. Also because if we are trying to encourage more open area at the ground level and encourage buildings to be slender and taller, is that if you go back to some of those diagrams we were showing before, and we kind of showed these little holes in the buildings where these courtyards would be located, you're not going to see those in a taller building. A taller building is going to provide their private open space on rooftop amenities and through balconies. They're not going to have the opportunity. So we could have either just gotten rid of that extra percentage or we could reallocate it to the public, and that's where we chose to put that.
Next item would be the standards for the minimum publicly accessible open space provided in courtyards and piazzas or plazas, that the publicly accessible open space be one larger comprehensive contiguous area, so 85% of the required publicly accessible open space shall be in one cohesive area within the lot. The remaining 15 can be elsewhere, but that the remaining 15 would then have a minimum dimension of 10 feet in either direction. And so this would prohibit any of those little segments that are somewhat divided and spread throughout and create one more meaningful publicly accessible open space area. Yes, Commissioner Astorian?
Pretty much like what Citibank has done with the access from the central and as well as from Lexington.
Correct.
Is that what?
Citibank, the Citibank project site included a passeo, so the passeo sort of wraps from orange and does a 90-degree elbow turn onto Lexington, I believe, or Milford. And then, yes, that would be an example of a publicly accessible open space passeo that's open to the sky.
It was a huge space. It was somewhere close to about 30,000 square feet. It's not my, if I, not, you know, if my memory serves me well, because it was done well. If that's the, if that's the case, I think that's a very good way of addressing passeos and so forth, if it has to go and divide the building and or the project into segments or quadrants, so to say.
Thank you for that comment. There, just to note that I double-checked and the open space standards have been doubled for publicly accessible open space in all zones, and that would include the Alex Theater. So there is not one district that has not been touched.
Okay.
So just to point that out. Which also brings us to a discussion on the floor area ratio versus the dwelling unit per acre discussion, City Council. And I'm going to actually turn it over to Bradley to go into greater detail.
So we had a discussion regarding the measure of density, but really what came out of that was, are we creating a diverse enough, essentially portfolio of housing for downtown Glendale? They came back, essentially what we were seeing were 24% of all units by market were two bedrooms, up to 28% were two bedrooms or three bedrooms. What we were seeing though is that essentially a handful of developments kind of tilted the scale. Most were really coming in somewhere between 14 and 18% of two and three-bedroom mix. But council really wanted us to look at how do we bring that total number even higher? If we were averaging about 28%, what we were proposing at 30% may not be enough. It's not substantial enough of increase. So they've asked us to look at that again, and we've tested it from an economic analysis perspective, and it does work. And at that tier three, and this is where we would also appreciate the commission's feedback, is raising that to 35% rather than 30. Tier two, it would be taking it from 20 to 25%. And it was also asked that we look at incorporating it as part of the buy right, which we are looking at. Part of that challenge, though, is, and before the commission gives their feedback, is that there could potentially be a number of legal problems with that. Essentially, that is a buy right FAR. That's what you're allowed to do with your property because you own that property, you can produce this much density, this much development. Anything that we add on top of that essentially could be legally challenged. So we have looked at it. We don't have a definitive answer, but it does come with essentially that word of caution.
Bradley, would you please explain it one more time? What exactly?
Which question?
So I'm looking at the diversity in housing mix, and you explained that most of what we currently have are two and three-bedroom, and we're trying to push that to a 35% maximum? Is that...
Most of what we get, I believe it's approximately 72% are studio or one-bedrooms. 28% overall are two and three, and I probably threw in a bunch of extra numbers in there that just confuse us, so I'll just simplify it here. Essentially, we're getting about 28%. And our requirement on that tier three was 30%. And council posed a question, is that enough? If they're going to get all the way to that development potential, should we be asking for more in order to achieve that? Therefore, as part of this, some of these things that we're looking at that are not in your packet are increasing that tier three up to 35% if they're going for that maximum development potential.
For two-bedrooms.
For two and three-bedrooms, correct. Anything larger than a two-bedroom.
I have a follow-up question on that. Is there something to back that up? Because if you're looking at from the developer point of view, they make more money developing singles and one-bedrooms. For them to develop two-bedroom and three-bedrooms sometimes doesn't pencil out. Now, what is it that was a determining factor that even maintaining at 30% was not adequate enough, that you had to increase to 35% to bring this up? Was there demand, you know, in City of Glendale for this? Was there shortage or... Because this will, obviously it says incentive, so you know, if he wants to get more incentive, you know, he'll get there, but I think part of it also is for you to also invite developers to really come into Glendale to develop. And I think this kind of goes, you know, works against that. So what was the thought process behind that?
A couple of things, actually, is part of the recommendation. Right now, if you look nationwide, the fastest growing population in downtowns is the age zero to five. So essentially, families are having children. We're also seeing a rapidly growing section of the population that's becoming multi-generational. Households bringing in their grandparents or anyone else that they may need. So the idea that we create downtown to be out in front of that, development typically is very reactionary. In this case, we can try to be out in front of that and retain those residents. We're very fortunate, in the case of, say, families, we, our downtown is buffered by schools. Most downtowns do not have schools within a walking distance, and we do have that. So we have a great opportunity to retain these households within our downtown. So that's really the driving force behind that and to accommodate for that growth. Between 2000 and 2017, the census tracts that encompassed downtown and some portions just outside of it saw an increase of over 200 children during this growth in population of zero to five.
And may I add, I think from what I've heard and from what I'm seeing, we don't want to completely push families out of downtown. We do want families to be in downtown because we want to make the downtown a more livable place rather than just attract the younger workforce.
Well, that's the whole thing, though. The whole thing is to be diverse.
Correct.
Not by age, not by sex.
That's correct. But then what happens is, as a family, families, when they plan, they move out of downtown. And that is where the issue comes up.
I was just curious as to, you know, if there was some number that, you know, that you used... you used that was credible towards that number, that 20%, can you explain? So you're saying that for tier one, you might be legally challenged on this 20%. So can you elaborate a little bit more on that? So what is it now? And that when you set that 20% that we might be legally challenged?
So all of the development numbers that we pulled essentially would have been from this tier three category. Everybody went for the maximum development potential. But in the event that anybody wanted to develop at a lower scale, we wanted to make sure
By right.
Yeah, we, we wanted to make sure that we still were able to get that community benefit. Hence why we put that second tier in the middle. Because really with that tier one, they are, they're just allowed to develop it, develop at that density. As long as they abide by our standards and our design requirements, which include open space, which include the modulation and all of that. But because that's by right, we could find ourselves challenged because we've now added on something else that essentially we're saying they have to do in order to develop. It, it's not a certainty, but we do have reason to, to have concern around that.
I have a follow-up statement. Have we considered differentiating these percentages if it's a for ownership product rather than rentable product? Because isn't part of the goal for these families and diverse types of groups to stay in Glendale rather than just temporary?
It is, but that's not something that we can control, whether it's a for rent or for sale property.
Okay. That was a good introduction. Why not, or how can you incentivize ownership versus rental in order to create that mix that we want to have? In other words, everything that I've seen in downtown, probably they're all built condo spec, but none of these are ownership units. How do you incentivize that?
There's not a lot that we can actually do in terms of incentivizing. Again, this goes back to the question of tier one of whether or not we can put this requirement in place, is that we start to toe the line of housing discrimination. We're starting to say exactly who it is that we want to live in our city. And that's not really our job. We can do things to encourage diversity, encourage a diverse, diversity in kind of housing typology in terms of the scale and number of bedrooms. But whether that's for sale or for rent, there's not a lot that we can.
Under the fair housing.
Correct.
Right.
May I, please go ahead. I think you have a question.
I, I, I can wait.
No, please, because mine was a follow-up.
And so the, the, the other question that I had was, is there a reason why in our presentation, I remember the council's presentation had the existing DSP and had the unit count per acre of 142. And then the tier three was at 122 units per acre. Is there a reason why ours doesn't have that?
That was a different presentation. Essentially, the council was deliberating whether or not we would continue with our floor area ratio measurement or convert to a dwelling units per acre measurement. So essentially, that was for them to help understand exactly what development intensity we were trying to, or what we were going to achieve.
So this tier three right now, Mr. Calvert, give me an approximation. How many units per acre will that plan yield?
That would be actually the 122 that you saw in that presentation. Now, that may actually come down by a handful, just be, if, if we do pursue this 35% requirement as part of that tier three, but that was the 122 that you saw.
And so right now, on the tier one, which is 142 per acre, right?
No, no, I'm sorry. The, the 142.
The existing DSP.
Existing, yeah. And that's, that is not at the buy right. That would be at the maximum development potential.
I understand. And so the breakdown, again, I go back to the council meeting. Your two bedrooms are today, as we have, approximately about 25% of the entire stock.
Correct.
Your three bedrooms are 3.7% of the entire stock. And your studios are approximately 20%. That leaves about 51% that are one bedrooms, right?
Correct.
That's what it comes down to. Now, and, and your question is, you want to get a feedback from us, whether we should stick at the 30% or the 35% for the two and the three bedroom?
Correct.
Yes?
Correct.
Okay.
And one thing we would note there too is that it's, it's not just the percentages that we're changing. It's the design standards as well. Through the research, actually going back to that earlier question of where we were able to derive some of those percentages, looking at other cities that also have some of these policies in place or some of these incentives in place, and what were they pursuing in terms of that, that housing diversity mix?
May I ask you a question, Mr. Calvert? So looking at other cities that have adopted something similar to this, have there been any legal challenges that they've had to deal with? Or, and is there, are there any measures that they might have taken?
We'll address that.
Thank you.
Yes. Members of the Planning Commission, there, not that we know of, I mean, we haven't done a survey of various cities, but none, none of the published cases that I looked at in the course of researching this issue had it, had a zoning regulation similar to ours with respect to bedroom count. They were, I wouldn't say, maybe they weren't completely different. There were some challenges with respect to overcrowding regulations that tried to control population in certain housing units, but none that really limited or, or dictated how many bedrooms a developer should build. So we can't do an apples-to-apples comparison. And, and we don't know of any cities that have been, that have enacted something like this and have been challenged.
Thank you. And actually, what we are proposing is going to do the opposite because we're going to have less units because there are going to be larger units, correct? Having more two and three bedrooms rather than single or single bedroom would create less units.
It could be a slightly lower dwelling unit per acre if you were to do a conversion factor, correct?
And just curious, what would be the basis of, let's say, being challenged legally on this?
There's a number of issues and I, and I won't go too, too in-depth. One is under housing, state housing discrimination law. The idea is that you're expressing an intent to preference to single people, or in this case, families versus single people. Another potential issue which we may or may not run into in our scenario would be preemption of building, building standards and health and safety code standards. The other issue is the fundamental right of privacy of, which is a constitutional, California constitutional principle. So in that situation, if a court found that a zoning regulation burdened the fundamental right of privacy, that they would only uphold a regulation if it, if we had a compelling interest in regu, in passing that regulation. And it's a very difficult standard, evidentiary standard for cities to meet in that situation. Not saying we couldn't do it, but it would be quite a, a big hurdle. So those are the three broad areas that we could run into some issues. I, I'm not saying, and we're not saying that that's, we're going to be challenged or that we wouldn't prevail ultimately, but it, it is a risk that we're looking into.
Thank you.
Is that only for the buy right? Or is that for all?
Correct.
Oh, only for the buy right?
Yes. If it's an incentive, we don't, we don't feel that there's a, there's a risk there.
So if you're gonna, if, if we are, if, if this is going to be challenged, what makes you think we would not be challenged at 30%?
Well, those are incentives, but we're talking about the buy right, the 20% tier one, which is the buy right project.
Okay.
We would add as well, we, we tested this from an economic analysis perspective to the percentage of units. And we, we played with it from that perspective to make sure that it did work. We've, I think, used everywhere from 15 to 35% within that tier to ensure that there was economic viability from that as well.
Okay, that, that concludes the topic of the downtown specific plan amendments. And we'd also like to call out Krista Gardi, who was part of our project team and who handled much of the formatting issues. So thank you to her as well. Which brings us to the next topic. And last topic would be the zoning code text amendments. And that obviously deals with only one use, the hotel use, and the reduction, proposed reduction of 1.0 parking spaces per hotel room down to 0.8. That has been consistent now with recent studies submitted for parking reductions that have been approved for several of the hotels that are newly built. And also consistent with the current Institute of Transportation Engineers, the ITEs, and the Urban Land Use Institute regulations, that this would meet the parking demand for today's hotels.
Thank you.
We would like to point out that we are continuing our public outreach. We have met with the designer review board, with the Chamber of Commerce, the Royal Canyon Property Owners Association, Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. We will also be meeting with the Homeowners Coordinating Council and the Downtown Glendale Association. We have also reached out to the tenant unions and also to Go Glendale. Go Glendale represents six of the largest multifamily and mixed-use projects here in the downtown, and they have relayed this information to them as well. And with that said, our proposal is to return to council with your comments and recommendations on March 5th for the amendment introduction and for adoption on March the 26th.
Okay. With that said, I'm sure there are a lot of questions. We'll do the questions. Then we'll go over comments and what, you know, we want to relay to council. And then maybe we can discuss a little further on the changes that we were just discussing about and that 35% and so on. So you could have an answer.
Ma'am, I'm sure. I just, for my own edification, I happen to look at land use and before, I did not come across this term. What is congregate limited? You know, I like, I know what senior housing and I know all these stuff. What is congregate limited?
Congregate care limited would refer to the land use for residential, which is, would be assisted living.
Oh, it's assisted.
So that it's not a medically, medically oriented congregate care facility, but that congregate care, whether it be assisted living, which allows for seniors to be on their own with general dining opportunities.
It's without medical supervision is what it is.
It would be without, correct.
Just looking at it, if you go back in 1970s, that might have different connotations. So that's, I was just joking.
All right. With that said, I'm sure there are a lot of questions. Should we start from you, Mr. Asadurian?
If I don't have a choice, sure.
This is just questions. Are there any que, I have a lot of questions. So.
Sure.
I'll let you, I'll start from the.
And, and I appreciate the, the extension of the, the, the opportunity. Again, I want to go back to your tier three, which is really, this, the way that you get to the 35% is through the incentives and so forth. The tier threes are the 100, approximately 100. And I go back to units per acre versus the existing, which is 142. Could you have achieved the same open space, which I like, which is doubling the size, by having left it at 142 and do whatever else it is that you were suggesting to go on form-based FAR and so forth? Could you have done that?
So the open space.
Could you have done all the breakdowns and, and, you know, the, the, the changes and so forth that we all like very much?
And before Mr. Calvert answers, I want to make sure, we didn't have 144 units to the acre before. It was form-based. And when you, when you backed into a number, you got 144. We're backing into the number and it's 144.
The 144 represents an average. If, if you look back at those projects, you may have seen 110, 172. It, it varied depending on the project size and the site. What I'd say is that the design standards, the open space requirements have no impact on that whatsoever.
So there was, you could have gotten the same number of, or the same square footage or doubled the, 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 the open space even with the 144?
Correct. That, that, that average that may change, could change, and it doesn't mean necessarily would, is because of that, essentially the, the diversity in housing mix, trying to encourage going from, say, 30%, 28% of two and three bedrooms up to 35%. That's where that, that average could decline.
See, this is the part that I can't connect. To get that, to that diversity and to get to that community benefit of diverse units and so forth, why would you have, the outcome is reduction of the units per acre from 144 to 122, which is about 14%. Why would you want to do that?
Essentially, to create a more diverse mix of, of housing units. What we were seeing is 72% of units were either studio and one bedrooms. And the studios, the, the standards and requirements alongside those are essentially the same as a one bedroom. So about 72% of the units were essentially the same. So encouraging a more diverse mix into that. So yes, you may lose some of the studios or one bedrooms from that, that pool of units in favor of obtaining some that are two and three bedroom units instead.
But you'd essentially have the same square footage.
The mass would stay the same. The FAR would stay the same. Again, we measure density by FAR right now. And that was, based on that last meeting, it was to continue moving forward with that. That discussion, those averages that we, we derived, that was just a conversion factor calculation essentially. That's not an exact science by any means. We could easily still potent, or potentially get 140 units per acre if you were to do a conversion factor on that. We don't know exactly.
I think it'll be easier in the Broadway District when you have a height limit of 245 versus the other areas. I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it. To me, it sounds counterintuitive. Why? Because you reduce, again, I go back to the numbers. The number, approximate number is reduced from 144 to 122. And yet, we want higher number of diverse units. To me, it sounds, or it, it would, it, at least, the way I look at it is developer would not mind building more two and three bedrooms when they know they're at 144 versus 122. I may be wrong, but that's the way I'm looking at it. Go ahead.
No other questions?
Anybody has any other questions?
Questions? Questions?
I, I just, on that tier one, two, three bonuses, I guess we're on the same, you know, questions on that. And that is, you know, you have SB 1818 and it gives you a certain amount of bonuses, FAR and, you know, incentives. So does our two and three give in addition to SB 1818, more incentives here? Because you, you have a, you know, the chart that we, we, you know, have, the table that we have. So the table that we have that, that shows what the, you know, incentives are, is that, you know, the maximum, like I say, table, you know, tier three gives you this much here, is that on top of the SB 1818, was it inclusive of SB 1818 by, you know, I guess, what I'm trying to say is that does, does our tier two and three give, you know, additional incentives? Because, you know, it's requiring open spaces and other, other, you know, mobilities and so on.
Yes, Commissioner Lee, the SB 1818 allows for developers to exceed any type of development standards based on the level of affordability and the amount of affordability that a project is proposing. So essentially, a project could exceed the set maximum FAR or height limit for the DSP. There are density limits when it comes to the, or I should say, the base limit for calculation purposes in regards to any type of density limit, density bonuses? Just forgive me. I believe that the legal is consulting as well. So current, the current DSP and the proposed DSP has a base level density limit of units per acre. And this base density limit would assist us in calculating the maximum density bonus that would be permitted, whether it's the maximum 35% based on a very low affordability, affordability proposal. So they can exceed that and not follow the, the diversity in housing and the other tiered system, community benefit system. If they wish to propose a project that includes both, we would then take a look at it in terms of whether or not the project can essentially double dip.
So to simply, so they have 35% maximize, maximum benefit from SB 1818. Then if they provide other guidelines here, they could exceed that 35%.
If.
And I'm going to, yes.
I can answer.
Yes.
Okay. So, planning, members of the planning commission, you have to really look at SB 1818 as the density bonus law, as the state density bonus law. It's really just, it's sort of like layers of law. So we have our zoning code, which this is. And then we have the layer on top, which is the state requirement, which allows you to stray from the zoning code. But it's based entirely on affordable and the number, as Ms. Eventide has aptly explained, the number of affordable, affordable units you're providing dictates your dens- the number of affordable, affordable units you're providing dictates your density bonus, and it's purely density. But you also, of course, get incentives and bonuses that could allow you to stray from other development standards. But this would be in addition to that, and that would be not conditioned upon affordability at all. It would just be conditioned on meeting the criteria in these tiers. So it is double dipping in the sense that you are getting both, but it's for completely different things, and we're mandated by the state to allow the density.
Thank you. That's, that's how I wanted to add.
Yeah. Okay.
Actually, I have a question that is kind of tying to this, and it was about that and the California, California Government Code 61915, which is the density bonus law. Is that the same, by the way?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I understand that for affordable housing, it's kind of almost like a gray area. There are no limits that you could put in. But just to, again, clearly understand, you, you kind of went over it. Is, did I, when I was reading it, did I understand it correctly? That basically, there are no limits that are put in when it comes to affordable housing units?
When it comes to affordable housing units, no. I mean, if you do 100% affordable, you get, you get different, you know, different incentives. But I think what you're talking about is the density limits that those could go. So the density bonus limits are obvious, they, they are, in one way you look at it, it could be limitless because there is no cap, because a city can grant what's called a discretionary density bonus. We have written into the code, the latest amendments, the density bonus ordinance that Glendale passed in, I believe, 2017 or 2016, that any density over the state mandate of, and I forget right now what it was, 35%? Yes, thank you. Would have to go to council, which is why you saw a project, one project has already gone to council, and that was the GUSD project. So those would, and of course, you'd have, you know, state environmental laws that would constrict density. You mean, it isn't really limitless.
Okay.
There are some outside laws that would constrain that density.
I have a recommendation, and I have a lot other questions since we're talking about this. And then if you think that's something that can't be done, please let me know, since I'm not as familiar with the law. So what I think would be great would be to have the developers to do a pro forma and kind of do analysis of, financial analysis of the development and see, when it comes to affordable units, see where their project stands. And if there are, if, if not getting these bonuses is going to affect them negatively, then we can kind of analyze the study and, and kind of go from there. I don't know if that's something that could be done, or if it's something that can be challenged.
Members of the planning commission, sorry, I have laryngitis. It's, it's not clear how far we can go with requesting additional reports beyond those that are required by state law. And so that's a bit of an open question right now. We're going to take a closer look at that to see if we can provide more clarity as to the level of reporting. In terms of pro forma, I understand the basis of the question.
Mm-hmm.
But we may not be able to require it to, to the, to my understanding of what you would like to see in a, in a pro forma. So we're taking a closer look at it.
Thank you. That was actually a recommendation, so thank you so much. So I have some questions. One of them is, I'm going to go from the last one to the first. When we're talking about the averaging the heights, and I know you explained it, but just for myself to understand it more clearly, did you say that it is possible that the height might go over the limit that has been put when you're averaging the heights?
Probably portion of the building, yes.
Okay.
And that would be in the goal of, again, trying to create a distinction between two massings to create an aesthetic quality that essentially would be two buildings, but also applying that in areas where it would be transition zones. So again, you kind of get, you get a better cascading effect, respecting the neighborhood to the, essentially to the west in those cases.
Okay. And there were no limits on that either when they were doing the, the averaging? Meaning, let's say if you're going 10% over what the current limit is on the portion that's going higher or, or?
If I can go back here, this might.
Thank you.
If we can get back over there. There isn't necessarily a limit, but in this case, if you were to have a couple floors, four floors on the, the left side, the kind of brown portion there, you could displace those two on the right. They're not going to necessarily build one floor on the left side and then displace it all. Your maximum height's still, in a lot of cases, this may not even work. It's more, more likely going to be appropriate for smaller developments rather than larger. Just construction styles right now, patterns, what's cost efficient, won't really permit someone to build into, say, a 105 feet while having 30 feet to the, to the west in this case, just because it's cost prohibitive. We would expect this to be used in smaller developments.
Okay. Thank you. My fir, my next question is the section that talks about sidewalks. I didn't see that little chart that you had with the, yeah, the one in the, in the report, and I was actually looking for it. I don't know if I missed it, or it was the one that was kind of missing, there was one area that was missing the image, it could have been that one.
The chart, the chart itself was located in chapter four, under the first section, under site planning. And in today's, in the current code, would be four dash 13. So if you look under chapter four, for the pages that are noted as draft, watermarked as draft, four dash 13.
Okay, I'm still, okay. So I have a question. Okay, there it is.
And those would be based on the street topology, and the street topology map is on page four dash 14.
So looking at this, and I'm talking about the sidewalks, actually. These are small, in my opinion. We are trying to create a downtown that's going to be walkable. We're trying to move away from cars or try to, to work with traffic. New modes of transportation are coming in. I know Glendale is going to do a pilot program with the shared mobility program. So we are trying to, this new era of trying to leave the cars beyond and, you know, try to walk everywhere. Looking at this, it feels that this is a little small, because a 10-foot or a six-foot sidewalk can mean that four foot of it is, is actually planters, where, or trees, or three foot of it can be planters. Am I, am I misreading that?
And actually, yes.
Okay.
The six-foot sidewalk that you're referring to right now would be for the residential zones, and those would be the East Broadway District, which are residentially zoned streets. The sidewalk is a recommendation of six feet, and that would not include the four-foot parkway.
Okay.
So it would be a total of 10 feet from parkway, or from curb.
So parkway is basically urban furniture section.
Landscaping. So it would be the tree wells and additional landscaping in the parkway.
Then with that say, I'm okay, because I, usually, that's called furniture zone. So sorry, I didn't know that, that other term was used, so.
Yes.
That was another question. Thank you. And then section 4.2, and basically 4.21 and so on.
The building design section, is that correct?
The building design section, yes. 4.22 and so on. So there are sections in each of these categories that kind of talk about the developer picking only one, let's say, standard and moving on. What determines what they'll pick? That's my question. Is there, would there be anything that, you know, the city will be involved in for the development, developer to be choosing a standard here?
So I'll go back to, to this slide and actually the next one as well. In this case, yes, we, we created essentially four options. We didn't want to just give them one, and then essentially every building comes out to be identical. We wanted to still allow for creativity, but in this case, they could use something that's most applicable to their context, or maybe it is their design. But in this case, all four of these accomplished kind of that same baseline goal that we're looking for.
Okay.
And that's create a more diverse skyline, essentially.
And we're talking about all of the 4.2 sections, 4.23, 4.224, and so on, correct?
Exactly. Any of them that have that kind of option in there. It's choosing whichever one's best or befitting of their project.
Kind of following up on that, and I think this is a great place to talk about this. I think it would be great that we bring back Design Review Board on being able to review projects, especially since they have the expertise to be able to analyze a project when it comes to architectural, you know, look of the building. And as Commissioner Asadurian was mentioning, a good section of this is design, and as they are the advisors that recommend design to council, I think it'll be great to bring this back to Design Review Board, for Design Review Board to be able to analyze projects, give their feedback, or give their comments or recommendations to council, and of course, if council is, thinks that those are viable, they'll, they can approve or deny. But I think it's very, very important to, to bring projects in downtown district back to Design Review Board. And actually, to follow up on that, I think it would be great to bring the projects to all commissions that are involved, depending on what project it would be. Commissions are advisory bodies to city council, and it would be great if, you know, the, you know, the, the help and feedback that they can bring to the city. I mean, again, at the end of the day, city council could have always rejected that, but I think it would, I, I would recommend for city council to take a look at that. I know that they might be, they might not agree with that, but I think it would even alleviate some stress from them, since they'll have some expert opinion, especially from Design Review Board. So that's another recommendation that I have, and I really hope that they do take that into consideration. Let me go here. I think you answered, yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I was just wondering if any one of our fellow commissioners have any questions?
I don't mind chiming in after, so.
Okay.
Sure.
Usually, the chair goes last.
Well, I think.
That's the privilege that the chair has.
Yeah, I think, I think I asked, no one had any more questions, that's why.
I thought it was by topic, so I mean.
Okay.
However, you.
You know what? I'll let you go, and then I'll continue, because I have more comments and questions, so.
Okay. Mine are more minor, just questions. So one is regarding the overhangs. So I understand the reasoning for not having an overhang at a certain height, casting a shadow and things like that, but if we're encouraging diverse types of design, especially for the taller buildings, what would be the reason for not allowing any overhang, even 50, 60, 70 feet up, if that was a portion that gave more private open space on that level?
The taller buildings, so the overhang is essentially saying, we do not want that in the public right-of-way, over the sidewalk. With the intent of the high-rises being narrower, set back because we can get more open space, there wouldn't be a need for them to have to overhang.
But even on the public open space, for example, if part of the design was overhanging over that portion, not the sidewalk, it's still not allowed?
The requirement is open to the sky, 100%. So in, in that case, especially if you're considering one of a high-rise, they've already met their minimum requirement for open space, so whatever balcony projections into open space wouldn't make a difference at that point. It wouldn't count against them, I guess you could say. They would still be permitted.
Okay.
Madam Chair, the city attorney.
Yes, I just wanted to add something additional to that. If it's not open to the sky, and it's overhanging, the, it's part of the public space, and therefore we typically require an, an annual encroachment permit. We are not doing that. In some instances, we do, which would create additional liability for the developer, depending on whether it's an architectural projection or what the substance of the projection is. Yeah. Bill, you go ahead.
And yes, just to add on to that, the Public Works Department and the Building Department are no longer allowing encroachments over the public sidewalk. So balconies, whereas you see under current, certain current projects have the balconies projecting over the public right-of-way, that is no longer permitted by both Public Works Department and the Building Department, so.
Regardless of where it's at.
Regardless.
Whether it's DSP or anywhere else.
Correct. Regardless of where it's located. Previously, they were allowed for encroachment permits, no longer.
Okay, that makes sense. And one other, one minor, I guess, question I had is for the one-seat requirement for the public spaces. Is there like a certain enforced law that'll occur after hours to make sure that these areas are safe with the seats and potential of loitering and stuff like that?
We typically would encourage fixed seats in terms of benches, or there's also an incentive to provide planters with a low enough profile so that the, the seating is actually the ledge of the planter as well. So those fixed seats would obviously not be movable. If they are providing that in terms of chairs, we would do enforcement, because that is part of their required DSP standards, so we can always.
But is there a reason why fixed is encouraged as the medium of seating?
Essentially, for the point that you just made. Because that way, if it's, if it's fixed, it's permanent seating that's available to the public at all times within the public, publicly accessible right-of-way. If there are chairs, it's not to say that we don't encourage outdoor dining, tables and chairs, but we want to make sure that those tables and chairs aren't placed there at the very beginning and then somehow or other, a couple years later, vanish. So we would be able to enforce it with these particular standards in place.
Did you have any other questions?
I don't really have any other questions, just the only thing is, we touched on the tier system, and I just want to say for the tier one, I don't necessarily agree with the 20% minimum, but otherwise, I believe in the other ones, so.
Thank you. I believe you had a comment?
Madam Chair, I, I wanted to, you to finish up the questions on this, because I had comment on your comments about the design review and the process.
Sure. You know what? I started in my questions, and I went into recommendations. I think I'm good. I think I'll let you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just was curious, you know, with the, the whole process, you know, Madam Chair mentioned about, you know, reviewing process and all that. What projects come to our commission and what projects circumvent our commission and go directly to city council?
All projects in the downtown specific plan for new projects or projects that are commercial in nature greater than 10,000 square feet must go through the Design Review Board process, and that authority is the city council. So they would be going to city council for review and approval.
Directly.
Directly. If a project also includes any type of discretionary permit, such as a parking reduction permit or variance of some sort of nature, that would be combined with the design review application, and it go, it would go to city council. For projects that would go before the planning commission, those essentially you hear, you hear all appeals, all zone changes, all tentative track and parcel map cases, and any type of, I'm looking also to legal, and I believe that those would be under your review and authority. So typically, you would not be seeing design review projects or the larger-scale projects in the downtown. Those would be under the purview of the city council.
So if it doesn't trigger any of the zone changes or any of the variances and things like that, we'll not see that at all?
Correct.
Thanks God.
The, the reason I was asking is that, you know, Glendale Unified School District project came to us initially.
That was outside the downtown specific plan.
And that also included a, a zone change proposal.
Right. And then the second time, I, I think they, you know, went straight because of, you know, the, they was, you know, bypassed that.
It was a density bonus, correct.
Okay.
So you know what? Let's, let's discuss recommendations, and then let's discuss the percentages that we are asked to give advice on. And I'm not, I think I saw a motion, but we are not making any, we're not voting on, on anything, my understanding is.
Yeah, they would, you would need a vote from us, right?
Correct. We do have two motions that were part of your staff report. One would be for the proposed general plan amendment, meaning the DSP amendments, and the second one would be for the zoning text amendment specifically regarding the parking ratio for hotels. Along those motions, obviously, these are recommendations to city council. Along those motions, obviously, these are recommendations to City Council, and we would be able to then also include any comments you have.
So let me ask you, the comments that was made by the commissioners here, is that part of the record?
We would.
Or do we need to, you know?
We need to agree.
We would hope that there would be consensus in your comments, so if you can consolidate those and provide us Planning Commission directive, that would be appreciative. But obviously, we can include individual comments if.
I think there may be time, especially here and now, that an individual comment may be of utmost importance, let's say, to a commissioner, and the other two may not agree on. As a matter of courtesy, I believe that the comments that you're hearing, we will, just like your codification, we will try and consolidate most of everything. There may be a couple of comments here and there that may be different, not all of us agree on, but I think the council needs to hear from that individual commissioner.
And Commissioner Asadurian, you lead to a very good point, because we do include individual comments in the City Council's staff report. It might not be the actual motion from Planning Commission, but we most definitely can include individual comments as part of the staff report that goes to City Council for their consideration.
There is one item I want to speak about, if there are no other comments. Looking at page 7 to 6, the tiered, basically, I was looking at the options. So I was looking at the bullet number three, let's say, on residential or commercial, which says, pick one of the options from below, and then it talks about mobility improvements, 2% public art onsite, or priority uses. Why one? Why not more than one? That was one thing that I was, I was kind of curious. I don't know if there was a reason for that.
At a certain point, we felt we had to kind of draw a line in the sand in how far we were asking them to go. And as we scaled up the open space, and we scaled up the diversity and housing mix, these are lesser expensive additions we'd essentially like to see. Now, with those, they all carry additional things as well that go with them. So with the mobility improvements, they may choose one of several options they have in there, and then there are several other things that we would also like them to do, which would assist in promoting walkability and bicycling and things of that nature. But essentially, at a certain point, we felt we needed to kind of draw a line on what that ask was.
I know that the city has a TDM ordinance, Transportation Development Management Ordinance. Would sites, size, sorry, sites at this size, automatic trigger a transportation development management plan?
Yes, they do, and then this would be in addition to that. So we actually had them review this to make sure that we didn't have any conflicts, or lessen the value of that. So this would all go on top of it.
This is complete, perfect. Thank you so much. Because I was going to talk about, because we have the AQMD 2201 and 2202, and, perfect, thank you.
Let me ask you a couple of other questions, and this has to do with your outreach. When, in general, you've spoken to the homeowners associations, what has been their feedback? Has it been that they're really, really upset at density? Or they have a problem with good design and what have you? What kind of feedback have you gotten from?
I would say the majority had to do with design.
Design?
Mainly around they wanted to see higher quality design, higher quality buildings. Essentially, buildings that would kind of evoke civic pride.
And what about your outreach to Chamber of Commerce? Small businesses are very important to this community and to this city. What kind of feedback did you get from the Chamber?
They actually appreciated the predictability, and also appreciated the improvement to design quality. We heard, I would say almost universally, we've heard the same comments in terms of materials, quality of design, and the pedestrian public realm in open space. So they were fully supportive of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
I have one more comment.
Please go.
Real quick. I know that we spend a ton of money on the mobility plan, and I know that parts of it has been used and utilized in downtown specific plan. I think for any kind of amendment, or expansion, or tweaking, or even for downtown to even, to excel and become better and better, this traffic issue needs to be addressed. And I think our mobility plan has got a lot of answers to that, a lot of solutions to that. And I would advise, and I would suggest, that we pay a whole lot more attention to the mobility plan, which, in my opinion, when it was done, was a brilliant plan, by the way, when it was completed. That's as much as.
I'll actually say one thing. I wish that the land use element would also be updated, because if those two go hand in hand, the mobility element and the land use go hand in hand.
The mobility was designed specifically for downtown specific plan. This city spent upwards of a million dollars, and they had a wonderful, that's mind buzzing, I'm not answering. But, and they had a wonderful, there were a great amount of suggestions in there that if everything is implemented, and I know it's a matter of time, you can't do it all in one breath. But I think we've taken a lot of breaths since the mobility plan, and we need to start incorporating a lot more of it back into action, so to say. It's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
All right, if you are ready for some recommendations.
So let's do that. I guess we can start, again, we can start from right, and then go to left, and then, so.
Doesn't matter.
Commissioner Asadurian, we'll start.
As long as we all end up in the center, that's what matters.
I think that's, I agree.
So are we doing all of them at once per person, just to clarify? Like each section, and then discuss afterwards?
Well, when I say something, you see, you ask everybody if we have consensus, so.
Correct, so yeah, we're going to go one by one. If you have any comments on any of the items, or if you think there needs to be some changes, just let us know, and we'll kind of talk about it and try to come to consensus. If not, then they'll just note it as your comment, and they'll give it to City Council. And then at the end, we do want to discuss that one item that was requested from us to discuss, which was on our.
The density.
Correct, it was the density.
Tier three.
Last page on our presentation. So with that.
In fact, I'm going to start right there.
Sounds good. Please go ahead.
I don't have a problem with the 35%. In fact, I think it should be higher. We need to have a diverse makeup of units in downtown, more so than we do now. And in my opinion, the tier three, that's just fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Personally, I think 35% is fine. I think 25% is also fine for the tier, the middle tier. And then, as I said earlier, I just have an issue with the first tier. I think by right, as the legal team has mentioned, could cause some issues, and it's an extra complication that I wouldn't want to see.
I'm in the same boat.
Very good.
Well, it sounded like there are two different comments. So you were only referring to 35, but they were also agreeing on tier two.
I can include tier two as well.
Okay. So is there a percentage that we want to add to tier one at all? Or is that something that we completely want to eliminate?
What is the guideline now?
What's being suggested is 20%, right?
Currently, tier one does not have a limit. So by right, there is no limitation for the required bedrooms.
I'm trying to leave it at where it is now, instead of saying the limit.
But what is being proposed is 20%.
Correct.
Right?
It's being considered right now, per request from council. We were evaluating the economic feasibility and also the legality of it, so.
And your concern was that it might not be economically feasible.
Economically, it works fine. It's the issue with legality of it.
Okay, so, you know, legality, I can't chime on. That's all I can tell you. If it's legally possible, yay, let's do it.
I agree. I mean, if we have done the economic analysis and there are no impacts, I think it should stay. Especially since council has put this in motion, and council is interested to see this. And I understand what their thought process is on that. That's how I'm seeing it. How do you guys feel about it?
I said my piece.
Okay.
My thought is different, in that by right is, you know, developers' right, so I don't touch that.
Very good, thank you.
And you, sir?
I keep my by right.
And sir?
If it's legally permissible, I don't have a problem with it.
So it seems that we are split on this. So with that said, maybe we can have a recommendation, as the two of our commissioners wanted to remove the first year.
And we can make that of that in the staff report.
Thank you so much. Sir?
In your presentation, you talked about connector streets between Brand and Central. What a great time, what a great opportunity to use parts of these connector streets to bring in businesses, neighborhood service type of businesses, as opposed to for them to be on Brand Boulevard with very high rent and so forth. Maybe if there is something that can be worked out, I'll give you an example, dry cleaners. We used to have a fantastic shoe repair shop. Now it's turned into a pharmacy, which is terrific. I mean, there's nothing, but we don't have a shoe repair shop in downtown. These are, we do. Where is it?
Where is it?
Well, yes, right across on Maryland Avenue.
There are a few others. I would be able to point that out to you off camera, outside of the planning commission.
There's nothing wrong with uttering good stuff about small businesses. If there is any, you let us know. But I think those connector streets can be used for that purpose. Except to get there, Mr. Lanzarote, the gap analysis, if you look at the trade area, if you find out what kind of businesses the people in the trade area need, other than restaurants, right? And other than the ones that would be decimated by Amazon, so to say. It'll be great if we know that. If we have that data in our hands, we know what to attract to the city of Glendale. And that, by the way, this is not only inclusive for downtown specific area. You can apply that to Adam Seals, Montrose, and the rest. But those are the two main recommendations that I have.
So just to understand, you are requesting for an entire citywide study?
Only in downtown specific area. Right now, what's in front of us is DSP amendments. All I'm saying is that if you want to attract the right type of business for the demographics in the trade, they do what is known as gap analysis.
Correct.
And Mr. Lanzarote alluded to the fact that they've done that for the hotel, that segment, right? Now, I'm saying just the inverse of it. You look at your demographics, you look at your, the economics, and you look at the tapestry. Based on that, you decide what kind of businesses go in there. And that's what you recommend.
So just again, to understand, are you recommending there to be a gap study?
For it to be, this is a suggestion. Our recommendation, my recommendation is that it'll be interesting, it'll be great, it'll be productive if we do gap analysis on different segments that we at least know that may want, or we want to attract to downtown.
We can do that. The economic development team can do that. If I'm not mistaken, the code allows pretty much every service that you're looking for. So with respect, it's an important and valid comment from an economic development perspective. I think we've satisfied the land use part of the code. So it would be outside of the DSP that we would do that study as a means to attract business, to then fill the space that is being developed and allowed by the DSP.
See, here's the difference. It does, we're outside of DSP. When you did the land use, when you addressed the land use, you did not have the 3,000 or 4,000 residents in downtown specific plan area. Right now, you have a number of residents in there that affect the economy of the trade area, that affect the demographics of the trade area, and the tapestry of it. Those are the data points that need to be considered for future attraction of different businesses. This is what I'm trying to tell you.
Agreed.
Okay.
So with that said, I don't think there is any votes that we want to vote on?
No.
All right. Any other comments?
I don't have any other comments.
We'll start from the left.
I think most of my comments have been addressed. I guess my main concern was the tiered system and some of the open space questions, which I had answered, so.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, same here. It's been addressed, so I'm ready to go into deliberation.
Thank you. There were two things that I mentioned, and I'm going to just mention quickly, and you guys tell me how you feel about it. So one was the formality, which our legal team said they're going to look into it. And if it is something that is legally acceptable, I would recommend for us to use that when we are doing the density bonuses. And I think that would be great, because we'll be able to see how, you know, it'll be great for the developer and for the city at the end of the day. So that's one thing that I was recommending. I don't know if we want to do a roll call, or if that's a recommendation that.
It's not necessary, and I think they will reflect your thoughts.
Sounds good. And the last one was, I think it is crucial for projects to go to, especially to Design Review Board. Again, that is such a great talent that can give great recommendations to council. And of course, council can always choose to not accept those. But I would recommend to council to allow projects in downtown specific plan area, just similar to any other projects throughout the city, to go to Design Review Board. And also, that, I'm giving more priority to that, but then also, at the same time, use the other commissions as needed for projects in downtown specific plan, meaning just similar to any other project throughout the city, use the commissions. If needed, I know that there was a discussion through the, when we had the stakeholders meeting. If needed, there could be a new Design Review Board that's designated to the downtown specific plan area, because of the amount of work that they will, or time that they would have to dedicate. But that's one thing that I would want to have, or have council heard. And I'm not sure if you guys want to take a vote on that.
Yeah, I have a question in regards to what Chair Shabazian just asked. Mr. Lanzarote, there used to be a time that we had an architectural consulting firm that would examine whatever project was being presented in downtown. Do we still do that?
We use staff. We do it in-house. We brought it in-house.
You have the design studio, and that's what, okay.
Correct.
So that's what it is. The design goes to the staff, as opposed to the design review. Yes?
There was a decision by the City Council for certain projects in the downtown, it wasn't the redevelopment project areas, downtown specific, and then it morphed into downtown specific plan area, that they would see those themselves. They, it was their vision that was in the plan, and they wanted to be the Design Review Authority. They returned that authority back to the DRBs in the San Fernando Road project area. It was a conscious effort to keep that in the central project area, or the DSP area. Now, I think what you're referring to is a review by the DSP, and then go to the City Council for approval.
That is correct.
And there was a time that we did that as well, and the backlog just became too great. The council said, no, streamline it, bring it to us with, and it was when that time, we had staff that would actually look at, help shape that to meet the design guidelines. I would say that, perhaps I'll put him on the spot, Mr. Calvert can speak closer to it. But as we, and he hinted at it, as we start to make those guidelines more standards, we think that the design review becomes more consistent, and more achievable, and understandable by a developer. by a developer. Anything to add, Bradley?
But one comment I have, please go ahead.
No, that's exactly the intent there, is to remove some of the subjectivity in terms of the review process, so that you didn't have the difference of opinion between staff and a board and a council, but there, there's a measurable criteria, and then everything else is left open to interpretation and flexibility. You're correct, that was brought up as part of the stakeholder meeting.
Again, when I was looking at the, especially chapter four, there's so much detail, very, you know, design detail, that I feel like having an expert kind of review it in a public forum, and I understand that staff is reviewing, but kind of similar to all the other projects we have in the city would, would just make sense.
Let me ask you, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So that's why I was recommending that. And I understand that we're trying to make this easy for the developers, but we don't want to see this, because developers have a kind of style. You don't want a developer to kind of, I don't want to say cookie cutter, but have similar type of developments throughout downtown, while we could have some professionals or architects that might look at this with a completely different set of eyes and give recommendations that might even be helpful. Again, I don't think it would, again, this is, this would be a recommendation, and it wouldn't be a final decision, but I think it would be helpful.
Oh, no, we do have staff that are trained in architecture, that have practice architecture as well, that do review the projects, including members on the urban design team and those that review projects.
Okay. I think you had a question.
And besides your design review boards, not every one is an architect on your design reviews, right? Or all of them are architects?
Not all of them, no.
Exactly. Okay. No, I'm good. I've made my comments, so.
Do we have any other comments?
I have a question. So is your main concern it being in a public forum?
It's not just public forum, because they could go to, they could go to city council about it. What I was trying to, kind of looking at how the city kind of processes everything, and all the different projects we have throughout the city, there is a set of steps that is normally taken for a project to occur. And that step is kind of taken out when it comes to downtown specific plan. I understand that at some point with the recession, it made more sense, but especially now that you're having concerns with developments in downtown, I think it would be great to, to be able to use as much expertise as possible. And during the stakeholders' meeting, that was something that was actually brought up by most folks that were present there. That's basically what, what I was trying to kind of convey.
The only problem I see with this is that, I know, for example, large projects in downtown, whether it's 100 or 200 or 300 units, they go through a progression, weeks and weeks and weeks of working with their design or their architects. If every time a project is changed, it comes back to the, to the design review and needs to be calendared and so forth, I don't know if it becomes cumbersome, or it becomes, I don't know if it's, if it can be done or not. But they've heard your comments.
Yeah, I'm with Commissioner Astorian. I, you know, I think, you know, the whole purpose is to, to help the public and also streamline the process, and, you know, I don't think we have to, you know, overdo it. So.
I, I don't think it's overdoing, in my opinion.
I think, I think it might just be a comment of your comment.
Sure, of course. It's understood. But just to clarify, I don't think it's overdoing, especially, just looking at cities, neighboring cities, almost all cities do this process. We are a large city, but there are other cities similar to us out there that they follow the same process. So kind of looking at the, at what the process overall is when it comes to development, not just for the city of Glendale, but other cities in, in vicinity, this is the process that normally is taken, so.
So we are clear on that?
Yes. That's, I was just trying to explain what he was mentioning.
Okay.
With that said, I think, was there a motion that someone wanted to?
There, there are two. Go ahead.
Yes, members of the planning commission, there are two motions. I just wanted to mention that it, it should be modified, because the way that's drafted right now, it says that the planning commission hereby recommends that the city council adopt the proposed amendments to the specific plan, but it should also say, including the comments and recommendations from the planning commission that made this.
Is this a attachment one or attachment two?
This was actually just a draft based on.
We have two attachments in front of us.
We have, we have two attachments. One is, one is for the, the downtown specific plan amendments, which would be the general plan amendment project, and the second one is for the zoning code text amendment.
Okay.
So you do have to act on, on both of those individually.
We can't, you want us to do it in, under one motion? No.
I think you're going to do two motions. Correct?
Correct. And what we can do, if there is, since it seems like we have individual comments on individual topics, we can, those, those comments, we can include it in the actual city council staff report, if the commission feels that it is appropriate, and the motion then can just be the recommendation for city council, having, for you having considered the addendum, that was also included as part of your staff report and your packet, having considered the addendum, and then continue on.
Okay. So there is a number of, there is a number of recommendations that have been made here, right?
There are two recommendations that are going to be made, and there were some changes to one of the recommendations as, as a legal team just read to us. So with that said, for the first item, is there a motion, as the legal team just read for us?
Well, before we go to a motion, Madam Chair.
Yes.
These, either one of them, I don't know which one, and you could tell us, Mrs., Ms. City Attorney, which one of them has to include the verbiage that the considera, that, the number one, right?
Yes.
That it needs to be, that, that it, that it should include the recommendations that staff collectively and individually has heard from the planning commission and/or commissioners.
That's correct.
Correct?
Sounds like you just made a motion.
By the way, before we make the motion, I think the date on your motions are, are 2018, so you might want to correct that. So is there a second on that?
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Okay, in terms of a motion, and this would be for the, what essentially is PGPA, which would be the general plan amendment 1901560. I have a motion made by Commissioner Astorian, a second by Commissioner Trachten.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Astorian?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Trachten?
Yes.
And Chair Shabazian?
Yes.
The motion passes 4-0.
Do we have a motion for the second item? Attachment two?
This would be for the reduction in the hotel parking ratio for hotels.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion made by Chairman, or Commissioner Lee, for a second. Second by Commissioner Astorian, terms of a roll call. Commissioner Astorian?
Yes.
Lee?
Aye.
Trachten?
Yes.
And Chair Shabazian?
Aye.
And if I might note, the date on that motion will also be updated.
Correct. Thank you. That said, we do not have any community development department updates and no comments from commis, order, any comments from the commissioners? I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. Any comments?
Yes, there is one, real quick one. I suggested prior to the meeting to the city attorney, Ms. Van Miden, that it may be time for us to revisit these FPPC rules and the conflict of interest rules and so forth as a planning commission. And in fact, since we've had two recusals on the council level lately, that could be a teaching moment for all of us. So that's already been intimated with Ms. Van Miden.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Chair and members of the planning commission, it's a lucky break, because I've been invited to sit on a panel for the League of California Cities to provide ethics and conflict of interest information this coming March. So I'm right in the middle of the process of updating and examining those cases, and so I'll be fresh from making that presentation at the League of California Cities, and we'll be working internally with legal staff to give you a very crisp and up-to-date presentation on those same topics, so.
Thank you.
We'll schedule it. Thank you.
Does this, yes, please go.
I'm sorry. If I may make another comment. Your presentation was compendious. It was very concise. I enjoyed it. For most part, it was easy to understand.
Thank you. I echo Commissioner Astorian's comment as well. Thank you.
I was just actually going to ask legal team, does this include the Form 700, I believe it's called, what you were just mentioning, going back to the first, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No.
With that said, we are adjourned.
Second.
Good.